I don't.
Now it does.
It does.
All right, give me just a second because it'll, I'll have to mute the volume on it. Come on. Okay. Oh, crap. Okay, I think we're good now.
Okay, let's call this meeting to order. First order of business is the parent teacher collection donation.
All right, Ms. Cameron, you're up. There you are. You're on mute. You have to unmute yourself. It's down in the left-hand corner.
Unless you're on an iPad.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, well, this is my first Zoom meeting, so thank you so much for inviting me to your meeting, to the Board of Directors. And Mrs. Melbourne, I really appreciate you giving me some time to speak today. I, I think maybe that everybody may have received the, the letter that I've written and the list of books that are being proposed to be donated. I'll tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a retired teacher. I retired from the Mount Vernon Middle School after 32 years of teaching. I'm currently an educator, educational writer, consultant, and editor for Carson Deloza Mark Twain Media Publishing Group. That is the largest publisher and distributor of educational resources for teachers and parents in the United States. I was very fortunate to be accepted as a writer for them. Todd Emrick is the owner of Mark Twain Media Publishing Company, which is a partner with Carson Deloza. And Todd, Emrick and his division specializes in educational resources for parents and teachers to supplement their curriculum. Now, I work with several parents that are homeschooling in the area, and I know the struggle that they go through finding the appropriate resources to supplement their programs. And I also know that they use the public library as a support system. It is my understanding that currently the Berry Lawrence County Regional Library System does not have a comprehensive middle school parent teacher resource collection. If you're interested in building a collection, Mr. Emrick would like to help you start by donating 150 teacher resource books and that are valued about $1,600. And he is also interested in continuing to help you update and build this collection yearly by making a yearly donation of newly published materials. I guess now, if you have any questions, I will try to answer them for you.
Any strings attached?
No, that he's, the reason that he's doing this is because I retired from the Mount Vernon School District, and I have worked for Mark Twain Media probably at least 10 years. I also worked with Suzanne Myers, who was, was on the board at one time of the library, and Carolyn Craig and I all retired from the middle school at the same time. And we started writing together. And then I have also written with Janie Dos, who is the sixth grade language arts teacher at Mount Vernon, and I also taught with Cheryl Suti and wrote with her, who is the seventh grade science teacher at the middle school. So when I first thought of this, I wasn't aware of how the library system worked. And I was just came over and I was just going to donate them, ask if they would like the donation at Mount Vernon. But then when I dug a little deeper and then I contacted Suzanne and she explained to me, that's not how it works. You have to go through the board, you have to talk to the board, and then they have to make a decision if they'd like to accept the donation and build a collection. So I changed my tactics from talking to the Mount Vernon director at the library, and I realized I needed to go higher up and talk to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Because I'd originally wanted the collection here because this is where I was from. If the other teachers who wrote in this collection, they're still teacher. But realizing that's not the way the system works, I said, okay, well, everybody will have access to it if it's, if it's taken care of at the regional.
What Gina? I think that what Joyce and I talked about is, we really, and I told Ms. Cameron this as well, that none of our branches really have enough space to separate out different collections. But what we can do, and this is what Joyce and I talked about, is we can designate in the computer a parent teacher collection. And on the material, when it's processed, we can put a parent teacher sticker. And so when customers go in the computer, they can search for parent teacher collection, and then they can find them on the shelf with that particular sticker in their, or their Dewey decimal number, depending on what the topic, because they're on all different topics. And we also talked that we, it would not be good to make them reference because parents and teachers want to be able to take the resources home. It doesn't do them any good if they can't use them at home. So, and I believe, Ms. Cameron, didn't you say that they could reproduce the pages?
Those are reproducible pages.
Yeah.
And I, I see it as an opportunity to do two or three things. First of all, the, the books I have written, co-authored or authored myself with those ladies, cover every subject. We have government, social studies, language arts, sciences, mathematics, reading, economics, and then we have two books that are on primary sources, using primary sources. So it's a, it's a really a comprehensive, and we even have geography. And so we have a comprehensive collection there for middle school students. And something else that I'm interested in doing, if, if you would like me to, at the libraries, I could schedule different times to talk to the parent teachers, because I know they meet, I know they meet regularly at the Mount Vernon Library, and I, I'm not sure if they do at the Miller Library, but I'd be willing to have a couple of meetings where I could sit down with the, with the parents and any teachers that were interested, and just go over the collection and say, here's this, this group of books can be used for this. There's the interactive books. There are different ways to use the interactive notebooks that we're working on recently as to just, the books are like a workbook that, and, and I could talk to the parents about different ways that they could use those in their, to supplement their curriculum. And that would be probably 15, 20 minute, where I could actually show the resources that are available, because there's two of every book. So what I was thinking was that that way, since there's two of every book, if somebody's interested in a book, someone checks it out, then there's always that other copy that if somebody was interested in the same book. And also, it gives parents an opportunity to preview. Resources are out there, because if they don't want to, if you order off Amazon, you really can't look in the books, a lot of the books. And then if you go to a, you can go to the teacher IPA at Springfield, but that takes time. You have to have time to get up there, time to look at the resources. So this is a way for them to see resources that are available, give, give them ideas, or they can use the books at home.
Thank you.
So I, I, I think they're good resources. I don't have an issue with them being added to the collection, and I think we can make it work. And they would be distributed among the two counties.
Okay. So I need a motion to accept this generous offer?
I say that we.
Okay, so Katie and Jan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Cameron.
Thank you. So much for letting me speak today, and I appreciate the fact that you're going to accept the donation, and I will contact my publisher.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is LJ Hart.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're going to review some updates based on the larger cost estimate that you received since our last discussion. Courtney Wegman will go through the booklet. She sent a new one and a new summary page, and we'll, we'll, we'll try and answer questions and clarify all the aspects of what the, the underwriting would be.
Mr. Hart, if you don't mind, I need to interrupt for just a minute and update the board, because I'm not sure I did. The construction costs are estimated at 4.3 million, but the overall cost of the project is now upwards of five and a half to six million. So I asked Mr. Hart to give us information on borrowing more money, and we can discuss the other costs when he's finished with his presentation. But I wanted you to know why that, why that happened.
Gina, I don't, I apologize for interrupting. Clint and I coordinated that cost estimate yesterday. That base construction cost number is 4.66, and the total project is 5.87.
That was part of. Hard, it was going up and up.
That's part of the discussion we would like to have afterward as far as project budget, if we need to reduce anything, just a larger discussion.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. That's actually very helpful. I was just taking some notes on that. So with the two items that were sent, the two PDFs, one is the executive summary with the green and red. The first part of it is identical to what we presented in December last year. And then I've included two additional options, both to produce at the time, $5.6 million of construction funds. I have it separated into items, one assuming a rating from Standard and Poor's and Lorda, what we had talked about before, and the bottom one under the yellow, assuming that these certificates would be sold non-rated. So I wanted to review the differences between them predominantly in the costs associated with each of them. The book itself, the preliminary financial analysis with the blue and the yellow, similar to the executive summary, the first pages, one through 14 are identical to what was presented in December. So you would have that background information without having to use both books. But then I have the information that corresponds with Schedule Four and Schedule Five with that higher cost amount, starting on page 15. So if everyone can turn to page 15, I want to start reviewing there and then just talk about some of the differences with this, and then really focus in on, on the costs, and then answer any questions after you've had, you know, a month or so to digest some of the information that we talked about last month. So on page 15, it's a similar structure, a similar philosophy with the other financing amounts, this one being $5,750,000. Even though construction is looking to focus more on the June-July timeframe, for consistency purposes, as you can see on that debt service schedule in the top left corner, I've kept the funding date the same of April 21st. We can be ready at that time, we need money upfront then, or if we delay it until June or July, assuming you move forward, obviously we can be ready for that timeline as well. Principal starting in 2023 out to 2041, I've kept the interest rates the same as what we presented before. They are higher than is in the current market right now. One of the things that we like to do from the financing perspective is be a bit more on the conservative side with both interest rates, with our assumptions in growth and plus valuation, as we've talked about before, to call the district that you can afford something where that it's going to take less of that seven cent levy that was passed in than what you would most likely need for that. So it's not to be overly optimistic, but ideally, once we actually go forward to sell the certificates, assuming you move forward, the idea would be to be more aggressive ideally with those interest rates.
So we're, what we're presenting here is, is a worst-case situation for a refinancing. The interest rates are probably a half a percent higher than what the actual market would support now, maybe a little more than that. So, and if you look at that schedule, the interest cost, this is the worst-case situation, it will, it would be $2,205,865.21. That assumes you never pay anything early, and that we actually end up with rates this high. So it's what, it's, it's the interest expense over the 20-year period. You, you're, we're structuring in the financing, the ability to pay it off earlier, and, but we don't want the interest cost to scare you. It's a lot, but it also because we'll have a five-year call feature, meaning you could pay it off early. If you don't have any contributions to prepay, but interest rates are lower, anytime after that call date, we can refinance and save money that time.
Right. And I think last month, Katie, you had the question on if you refinance, if you, once that call feature opens and you refinance, does it go away or is it still available? And with prepayments, as long as you're not paying off the entire financing or moving forward with the refinancing, it stays open. So if you had $100,000 donation in 2027, you can use that money to prepay, and at that point, you're not paying interest on that 100,000 anymore. Once you refinance, if you do it at that five-year mark or after, after that five-year mark, then that new financing would have another short call feature on it.
And using her example of 100,000, if it was, if it was towards the long end of the financing that was prepaid, which would usually make the most sense, because that's the highest rate, that would save 3,750 per year if that 100,000 was prepaid at the call date. So you'd be saving 15 years times 3,750 with that much of a prepayment. So this schedule, this schedule doesn't reflect that, but you would be saving quite a bit of money through the prepayments.
Right. To illustrate the call feature on page 16 with Schedule 4A, identical what that was presented last month, these certificates would have a call date of April 26. So once we hit that mark, that's when the certificates can be prepaid or refinanced at no penalty to the district at that day or anytime thereafter with 30 days' notice.
Now, let me just also mention, as we're getting this ready to come to market, if you, if you discover you have a likely prospect of, let's say, a million dollars worth of contributions, and that you might get that within two years, we can, we can make some of these certificates callable in two or three years instead of the five years, so that you use that contribution earlier to downsize the, the total obligation.
Right.
But if you don't have anything like that in the works, we would probably stick with the standard five-year call feature. What we're saying is, as we gain more information on your fundraising, we'll try to tailor the financing to be as friendly to your goals and objectives as we can, but still get it sold.
Yes.
Okay, that sounds good.
On page 17 with Schedule 4B, I want to take a moment to also, if you can mark with your hand or your finger between Schedule 4B and Schedule 5B on page 21. And the reason I'm doing this is for both the rated and the non-rated financings, the interest rates are the same. So the schedules, as well as the maturity versus call with Schedule Five and 5A are identical to 4 and 4A. The differences are going to be on those sources and uses of funds with Schedule 4B and 5B. So with 4B, at the top, we have the proceeds from the certificates, $5,750,000. From there, the deposit to the construction account, at the time, I was assuming that the district would need $5,600,000 of construction funds. So you can see, after subtracting out those cost of issuance, just right above that 5,600,000. Then the cost of issuance themselves. Biggest thing to point out is, the district does not have to pay any costs until you move forward with the financing. So if you wanted to see the higher amount, so based upon the comment from Mr. Mosby on the overall cost going up another $200,000 or so, for us to put together another schedule and projections, it doesn't cost the district anything for us to do that. But assuming that you move forward with that financing, from the proceeds, we have the special tax council fees. These are the legal fees to the special tax council to prepare the legal documents for the financing that is approved and then signed by the district. The official statement printing in preparation.
What, what that legal fee does, that attorney's opinion that the investors rely on, that the interest on this is exempt from federal and state income tax, and we have to have a recognized bond attorney who will sign off on that. So plus, they prepare all of the legal documents that go into it, and there's a, a fair number of those. You remember, some of you remember from the, the financing we did several years ago that had a lot, a lot of documents with it.
Right, and the transcript. The next cost, the official statement printing in preparation, this is to support the preparation of the prospectus. So it's a disclosure document that LJ Hart and company prepares on the district's behalf. It includes information on the financing itself. So what are you using the funds for, the new branch in Monette, as well as information on the district itself. So your financials, the overall just demographics of the area, so that a potential investor can make an informed decision on whether or not to purchase those certificates. And that, that is a service that we do. We obtain information from the district and draft it on your behalf, then with your approval after reviewing it. And at, at the point, it will become final. The registrar, paying agent, and trustee bank fees, it's an initial $1,500 setup and $1,800 thereafter to the bank with the corporate trust department. And typically, we will use UMB Bank to provide this service. However, there are others that have the corporate trust department that will do this. Their job is, upon closing, the proceeds are deposited with that trustee bank, and then the district will submit invoices to pay project costs or draws on the district's behalf. UMB Bank, as a corporate trust trustee, will also help with drafting confirmations during your annual audit process, filling those out, as well as other administrative tasks related to the financing. So it's, it's 1,500 initial and then 1,800 each year thereafter, for as long as the certificates are outstanding. And it.
I'll just interject. You know, the registrar, paying agent, the registrar component of that is that they know who all the investors are. And when you, when you mail them your six-month interest or interest in principal payment, they will distribute it to all of those investors. Plus, they keep track of them for, for the IRS. That removes that burden from, from the district. It's the registrar and paying agent function and trustee, and they are the enforcer of the legal documents. So say, down the road, the board would not make an appropriation, the trustee bank would step in and try to figure out why, why you didn't budget for this payment. And eventually, they would be involved in, in the enforcement activity through. But they typically, we don't have that ever happen. But that is what their role is, and that's part of what, what goes into their fee. It doesn't go to LJ Hart and Company, that $1,800. That's not, not additional revenue to us each year. It's to the UMB Bank, or whichever bank you end up selecting.
The underwriting fees and underwriting expenses are the fees that would be paid to LJ Hart and Company as a result of purchasing the certificates from the district and reselling them on your behalf. So us taking the risk of buying them and then finding investors to be the end purchaser of those certificates. Keep those, especially keep the underwriting fees number in mind when we talk about the non-rated on Schedule 5B in just a moment. Below the underwriting fees, we have the rating fee of $16,750. As you've noticed, it is higher than what we had talked about before, mainly due to Standard and Poor's having a sliding scale based upon the face or the par value or the financing that dictates how much of a rating fee for this. So once we go above that $5 million mark, the cost goes from $12,750 up to $16,750. It's a one-time fee paid to Standard and Poor's, going through that rating process, ideally to obtain a rating on the certificates, so that they, whenever we're marketing them, we can include that rating within the official statement.
The rating, the rating makes your, your financing more attractive to institutional investors. If it has an A-minus rating and it's bank-qualified, which it would be, then we, we'll offer it to the local banks. They probably won't purchase all of it, so we'll need to go throughout the state and maybe even to other states. And a rated, a rated financing will, will be more marketable, and you'll receive or recover that $16,750 by having lower interest rates on this one than you would have on the non-rated plan. Plus, we'd have, you'd have more confidence in being able to find investors if it's rated. So it's definitely worth your while to try and get the rating. We will assist in that process.
Yes. The underwriting expenses cover things such as copying, any mailings, any travel. So assuming the district moves forward and Larry and I come down for an approval, this, this is also pending what's happening with the pandemic, and if a, meetings are still via Zoom. But traveling down in order to get all the legal documents signed so that the financing can settle and close, and you have the money available for construction. And then the recording fee, we have a recording allowance of $500, so that the fund or special tax, once the legal documents have been returned, they can be, there's a select, most likely the base lease, project lease, and the trust indenture can be recorded with the Recorder of Deeds office.
That will be encumbering your property in, into the lease document, which is a requirement under state law. It also is a security for the investor that would, it's an incentive for the, the district to keep, keep paying principal and interest throughout the, the life of it. One of the things Courtney said at the beginning, when we say move forward with the financing, what we mean by that is, we have the financing already sold and ready for your approval. Then as, and on, once we pay for it, that's when these costs would be paid by you. If we are not successful anywhere along the process, you owe us nothing or the attorneys. So it's, it's based on succeeding with the financing effort.
Has that ever happened? That you weren't successful?
Trying to think. Trying to think. I, we, we've, we've been successful. I think we've been successful almost twenty-seven hundred times in our twenty-nine years. I can't recall a time when we didn't succeed. But, but this is, if this is, ends up being non-rated. I'm going to need some local support from the banks and then we'll be, we'll probably be able to find it other investors as well. Particularly in this market, because there's, there's a lack of tax exempt product out there. And the investors are very hungry to buy whatever we, we bring, it seems like. But. There, that was a good question, and I can't recall, to be honest with you, when we haven't succeeded. But part of that is that we don't take on projects that are risky. So we don't, we don't over promise that we can do things, but we, we try to make it. Be upfront about the difficulties that we're going to face in being successful for you. But we have an incentive to succeed. You see those fees there? If we don't succeed, we don't get it. So that's somewhat your insurance policy.
So going off of what Larry was talking about with the costs, if we go to page twenty-one. And compare the cost of issuance for a rated financing, like Schedule Four B versus a non-rated. Go through, we start going through the rating process and it ends up being that. The final rating is not going to be the level that we want. So if it's medium or high investment grade around the A or above. In that case, we would want to move forward with the rating, uh, process. It's going to be low investment grade, A minus with the rating. But then the certificates are going to be in the triple B category. At that point, it may make more sense not to move forward with the rating. So with Schedule Five B, we're assuming that we're not doing the rating. The, go ahead.
Let me just add that when, uh, when a bank buys a, a, a financing that's rated triple B. Even though that's in theory a low investment grade. They don't like to have to show that to the bank examiners. So they would rather have a non-rated issue than a triple B rated. So it's going to be very important that we, we, uh, the presentation helps with the rating. Now, you've already done something that's going to, uh, be very helpful is that you have approved the seven cent levy. Courtney is assuming we, we, uh, have access to four cents of it in, uh, for these examples. And we're not necessarily taking it. The, that's what we, we count on as the revenue source to make the payments. And that will provide adequate coverage to make the payments. But S and P will understand that you have more revenue there if necessary to fill in. And, uh, that's going to be very helpful. What you've already done is probably the meaningful thing that's going to help us get a good rating is that you have. The, the seven cents already approved and it doesn't have a sunset provision. So that was a very, uh, good move on the district's part to get that done ahead of time.
So the main differences between Schedule Four B and Schedule Five B are going to be their underwriting fees as well as that rating. I kept the rating placeholder. You can see it's zero, because we're not moving forward with that rating. However, you see that the underwriting fees have increased. So as Larry had talked about, with regard to finding investors to purchase the non-rated financing. It will likely take, um, more, more work and more effort to do so. As a result, we have a three cent fee in order to help compensate that. As we had mentioned before, we don't keep all of that fee generally. It's, we will share it with other, uh, with Edward Jones, with Raymond James, Charles Schwab. Uh, for individuals that have those accounts as well as other broker dealers. So after going to the local institutions and then moving to regional banks and even banks outside of the state. We will share that fee with them in order to get the certificate sold. Because the, the last thing we would want is to come to you and say, we have four million sold, but there's still one million, seven fifty. Where you need the five point six, or if it ends up being more than that. So being able to share that fee in order to get those certificates committed to is, i- it helps us in that regard.
And some, sometimes a broker dealer will say. If you give us, uh, five dollars per thousand, we will take one million, five hundred thousand dollars of liability. So we read, we, we pay, we pay from our fee to them as Courtney's explaining. So if we don't, if we make that fee too small. We won't have the ability to have confidence that we can perform on your behalf. Now let's, let's take it another way. Let's say that, uh, just for example, the, the First State Bank of Purdy offers to buy two million dollars. We would reduce the fee because we don't have the risk for that two million. So we'd be able to reduce our fee on, in either example somewhat, uh, to cover those local. If the local support's very meaningful and high, that would be unusual for a local bank to go to that extreme. But if you're wondering in your own mind, how can we get these fees reduced? That's, that's part of, uh, how that could happen. And it has happened through the, our, our history several times where we've had very strong local support. And we've, we've honored that by reducing the underwriting fee. But again, again, you don't pay it until we're, we, we're delivering the process to you for your project. So we have to perform in order to earn our, uh, what we're compensating. And these are not to exceed figures. We will be trying to not, to, to make them smaller at, if we can.
And then after paying for those within the construction fund account, just over five million, six hundred thousand dollars. On page eighteen, as well as page twenty-two, it's the same cash flow analysis. It's similar to the first three schedules that we went over last month. So starting with your assessed valuation by fiscal year. A one percent growth each year thereafter, starting in two thousand, twenty-one, twenty-two. The district has actually been growing at over three and a half percent year over year for the last five years. But I didn't want to assume that that was going, that pattern was going to continue, so we went with that conservative one percent growth. As Larry had talked about, I'm assuming that four cents of the seven cent levy is used to make the payments. You have those payments in the light blue column from Schedule Four by fiscal year. We have the debt service coverage ratio, which is a similar pattern from before, which takes the revenue divided by those payments. And as mentioned, standard and pores, um, typically likes to see at least a one and a quarter times coverage. So earlier in the years, you can see that it's just above the one. With regard to going to S and P to get the rating, I may assume that more of that levy is available. So even though I, I'm only thinking four cents is going to be needed to make the payments or even less in other years. With regard to the rating process, we want to look at the available funds. So it's not committing them, it's letting them know it's available. In that white orange column, we have the surplus fund, so it's just above the four cents, the revenue generated from that to make the payments. If that is set aside each year and it accumulates. In addition to any donations that are made, if that money is not used for anything else and it is set aside. Then we use to make prepayments on the financing to reduce overall interest expense. Taking it from that worst case scenario on Schedule Four of the two million, two hundred and five thousand of interest and lowering that. Being that you never refunded and never prepaid with that number versus if you make a hundred thousand dollar prepayment in two thousand, twenty-six. You followed up with another fifty thousand and, and with those prepayments, um, and any donations. The one time a year. So if you got one hundred thousand, say, in March of twenty-seven, received another two hundred thousand in October of two thousand, twenty-seven. Thirty days notice to the investors and you can make that, that prepayment. So there, there's quite a bit of flexibility once you hit that call feature date.
Do you understand the, the, the surplus column and the accumulated surplus?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that revenue is, is, is additional funds available to the library district. What's over and above the payments. We're just, we're telling you how much it is and then we're showing you how that can accumulate if you put it into a, uh, an account. To dedicate to paying this off quicker without relying on contributions. And we're ignoring the interest earnings on that. That would also be revenue to you, uh, each, each year, uh, from the, the fund balances that you have.
We have people to pay too.
Yes, exactly.
Imagine that.
Saving it is not part, that's not why we went through the process to get the, uh, tax increase.
Sure. It's, it's a demonstration on how you can, how, sometimes our clients want to see the path on how quickly they can get something paid off early. But often they do use the surpluses for operating county governments, uh, schools. Everyone has the same, uh, other uses for that money besides just saving it.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. We'll, uh, we'll stay and listen to the, uh, the, the construction manager and the, uh, architect, if that's all right.
That's perfectly fine.
It helps us be more familiar with the project.
Well, Alex?
Yeah, um, so I apologize. The agenda says, uh, master plan review, and we'll get to that. I would rather let, um, Clint, Ari Smith and all the folks at LJ Hart, uh, go before we get into that. That does not involve, uh, their, their time. Um, the piece I did want to present and, um, I have to apologize that, uh, I didn't tell Gina that it was possible until, um, this morning. I think you guys have seen this, um, spreadsheet before. We've shown it in, uh, previous board meetings in two thousand, twenty. It's the updated, uh, total project summary worksheet. Um, let me zoom in.
Uh, Alex, will you share that so I can send it to the board members after the meeting?
Yeah, I, I apologize. I, I plotted this ten minutes before the meeting, so I wasn't able to distribute it. We'll, we'll try and do that.
I just want to make sure I get it in my notebook and that they have a copy of it.
Sure. So this is, uh, created in collaboration with Clint and Ari Smith. And Clint, I'm going to give you some time to kind of talk about what happened between January first and now. Um, as far as how we got, uh, from four million to four point six and seven. I wanted to, again, show all of those other numbers below it. Um, that includes Paragon's fee, engineers, all the other things, as well as some budget and plug numbers for the furnishings, furniture and kitchen equipment. We confirmed that that kitchen equipment number is probably accurate for what we're trying to accomplish with the Inspiration Kitchen. Um, we could have undershot that for, uh, catering, but the Inspiration Kitchen, that number seems a little more accurate. Furnishings is a pure plug number after, uh, Barry Lawrence starts talking to Hicks Ashby will have a better number on, uh, what they believe the furniture will end up costing. Building permit fees, that number fluctuates in relation to the construction cost. Uh, that's what we end up paying to Monette and then, um, Department of National Resources, uh, the state. Lastly, that owner's contingency, uh, we talked with you about that a long time ago and we just set that at three percent of construction cost. So that's, that's all the line items. What we really wanted to ask and, and set with the board today, if possible. In two thousand, twenty, we took the billing program that we had, multiplied the square footage by a dollar figure and came up with the four million. That was our very basic A times B equals C calculation for the budget. What we're looking for from the board is any feedback on, uh, uh, total project budget. Do we, does Paragon and Ari Smith need to look at removing, uh, and, and Gina and Joyce? Do we need to look at removing programmatic elements, reducing costs, changing anything we can to hit a lower number? Or are the increases an acceptable change to, uh, the board? I think at this point, I would turn it over to Clint to kind of give some more depth. And Clint, I've got your estimate here. I can put it on the screen if you'd like.
Um, sure, you can throw it up there. I think there's really. One main factor, um, besides a few of the other ins and outs that as we develop these things, they get a little more precise. A few of the things that we had added and discussed, um, in our previous meeting. You know, making sure that we allow for total project items. And one real small feature that I'm going to hit is cameras, you know? Maybe we don't know that we need them inside and outside, but the best thing to do right now for the project is to put that culmination. So we're going to put them inside and we're going to put them outside. As we develop the project, maybe we know that, we're not going to put them inside. That item alone, uh, equates to around, you know, twenty-seven thousand dollars just for the interior cameras. So to keep that in mind as we kind of roll through these things. Um, and the main item that has changed since original budgets were set is the steel market. And the steel market has increased, depending on which company I'm looking at and which component I'm looking at, anywhere from sixteen to forty percent. Um, that in turn changed our thinking on construction from being a structural steel building to a CMU building. Um, reason being, you know, concrete masonry units are a lot more readily available. Not as, not even near as, you know, tied to a commodity, whereas steel is. The other issue that has started taking place is that gypsum board drywall has started to increase as well. And both of these things was because they did not think that anybody was going to be doing anything whatsoever, um, with any type of construction. So they just quit making stuff with steel companies, fabricators and, um, gypsum board. Wood market is the same thing. If you go to Lowe's right now, you'll see that a stud we could buy last year for a buck ninety-eight is now about five dollars. Um, so all that stuff just starts rolling downhill. So what we've done is we've gone in here and tried to allow for that in every item. Um, anything that I have seen over the course of the last ninety to a hundred and sixty days that have gone up, we've identified that. So what I, what I can say confidently is that I feel that if we went to market right now and bid this project. This is the budget and this is the pricing that we would get. Um, normally what we see when we, when we go to market and bid the project, we're a little under what my budgets are going to show. Because we want to be very conservative in what we're looking at. That being said, I wish I had a crystal ball. I cannot say what's going to occur in four or five months. I don't know if we want to go through individual items. Um, I would leave that up to you guys if you want to look at anything specifically. Uh, but that's kind of in a nutshell where we've gotten our project budget from. And there were also some additions that we made and Alex pulled that up on the screen there. Um, added some parking spots, you know, that in turns add rock and curb and gutter, things like that. Yeah, I might open it up to you guys, see if you've had any questions that I could help and answer.
Clint, there's one other piece I wanted to, uh, present to the board, and that was the elevation drop across the building. So Clint presented all of the market factors on construction costs. There's one, um, design factor or site factor that we did not know about in two thousand, twenty. We looked at the site originally and we took some very basic Google Earth cuts and we thought there was seven feet of drop across the building footprint. After receiving the site survey from the civil. Of drop across the building footprint. After receiving the site survey from the civil engineer earlier this month. It turns out that there is ten feet of drop across the building footprint. That ten feet of drop, we have to address somehow with the site. And what we've come up with, what we've coordinated with Gina and Joyce earlier this week. There were, there's five or six different options on how to do it. The option that we've come up with is a series of tiered or terraced retaining walls on the east end of the building. And then keeping the building all at one floor level. What that means is increased foundations, increased site costs. And retaining walls that we didn't necessarily have factored in before. Clint, I think speaking with you earlier this week, that that's hundred thousand, hundred and fifty thousand of that increase. Is that right?
More than that.
More than that. What what's the what proportion is that piece?
What I'm what I'm looking at is right around one hundred and ninety, two hundred thousand.
Okay, so so that that site drop, those retaining walls and the site features make up that two hundred thousand of that. Six to seven hundred thousand dollar jump.
It is what it is. The other option had been to have a ramp going down. From the entrance into the main building, which I think. We lose a whole bunch of square feet when we do that. And I just, I think it's better if we can have the building all on one level.
To show that ramp, you can kind of see it here in the middle. Takes up a rather large footprint of the building. It increases a ton of concrete that we have to put in. It just, it doesn't make sense. And and Gina, we're still working with the civil engineer to see if a single floor level will work. So to the board, the ramp may be necessary. We're working not to do it.
You can, you can see they have to make the ramp a certain length based on ADA requirements. There's not really a choice if you put a ramp in. And there's increased, there's cost increased no matter which option, right?
Yeah, that there's no. If there was an easier option, we wouldn't have talked to you about it. We would have just taken it.
That's what I thought.
I'm not understanding the ramp. Do we? That means we would come in ground level and then. The ramp would take us down into the library. Is that what you mean?
Yes, so what we worked out with Clint and the engineer was that. Everything I'm circling in red, you would come in at the same level as the sidewalk off the front entryway. And that's essentially all those public areas that are active after hours. And then the library branch section of the library would be two feet lower than that. So that ramp, two feet of difference essentially from the lobby into the branch. We did it that way, not only because it helped reduce the retaining wall heights. Fills, earth fill, concrete, all those things, but also. It's a pretty good clean cut between the two zones of the library. What we've talked about, again, Clint and the civil engineer, it will be so much more cost effective if the building is all on one level. The amount of drop over the building may not let us do that.
Can't you just remove the the excess?
Yes, so and that's part of what we've. Part of the strategy that we're using for that retaining wall is that. This section of the building would be kind of cut and buried down into the dirt. Will make up some of that in grading. However, to the further we dig on the west side, the more stormwater problems we make. One of the options was to have a retaining wall in the west. Which meant that all of your stormwater is going to come down between that retaining wall on your building. And now you've got a, you're intentionally creating a way for water to get into the building. We're we're trying to avoid that. And we we talked about the those options with Gina and Joyce and just said. There's seven, eight different ways we can go. Are there any preferences on? Looks on performance and and we've come up with the terrace option as the. Least intrusive, least cost and most functional approach.
You can't put a a drain on the west side and have it run under the parking lot to the detention pond?
You you absolutely can. They back up, they require lots of digging and you spend lots of money to. Put that in as opposed to, I think Clint, I'm I'm going to quote you from earlier this week. He'd rather spend the money putting in fill on the east side of the building and bringing it up and making the building functional. Than spending money on trying to Band-Aid a problem we've created. Is that accurate, Clint?
Yep, that's very.
Well, and Alex, have we looked at ways if we rotated the building? Or moved it closer to the west end? Does that save any costs or make it easier?
We are. We have maybe one or two feet of play north to south. We're very, very tight that direction. East to west, when we changed the building program and removed maintenance and the admin offices. We got some play. There's not really a benefit. That drop is relatively steady across the site, so it, there's no. There's no magic location that the building could go to reduce the cost. So at that point, it's more of a preference on. Where you want things to go. What I will say. One of the, excuse me, one of the things we, and these are the markups, sorry, all these symbols and stuff are markups we had with Gina and Joyce on Tuesday. We designed the building that it could grow to the east intentionally because we're tight on all the site elements, north, south and west. So the east wall of our building can grow and shrink. We've intentionally designed it that way based on feedback on. The children's area or the stacks. So we've given ourselves a relief valve if anything changes. We've also then set it up that if you guys in the future want to make an addition. I'm not saying that the structure would be set up that way, but we've placed the building so that you at least have one direction that you can go in the future.
Okay, okay, you you said there was ten feet difference? Okay, this is your, go ahead and shoot me now that, what about a basement?
A basement.
Actual usable space in a basement?
For storage or just. Not for the public necessarily.
Right. The the couple of things I would throw out, even if it wasn't public, you're immediately spending a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars on an elevator. Because your staff still has to be able to access that lower level by ADA. The other piece I would throw out is Missouri basements are just a bad idea for hitting rock and other things and. We expose ourselves to a lot of risk with subgrade. And that's not saying that that's not a a great idea, but it's also an increase in cost that. We we just, we don't typically look at. If it's something you want us to look at, we will. And I have a discussion item later here that.
It was just a thought.
Yeah, no, and and please ask all those questions, push on all those dimensions. That's the whole point of this. We're not, we're not trying to say this is the only option. We're going. You know, that's it. It's more of a, we wanted to share what has developed over the month to. Make sure we're all on the right track.
So basically you'd be putting like a crawl space underneath the one end or it would be fill?
We we just flatten the site essentially. We we make the the ground underneath the building flat. That that's the goal. Again, we may have to. Put a tier inside the building and do the different levels. We're trying not to do that. Basically, Gina, I think the decision on that would be working, once we can get the civil engineer to figure that out. Or what it would take. Turn around with Clint and cost model which direction and see if there's a cost benefit one way or the other. And that would kind of be the deciding factor. We we just don't have that info yet. This all came up in the last week, week and a half.
Alex. You mentioned reducing the building like square footage wise on the east. Or extending it on that side. How much? If we reduced it, which I am not a fan of, but are we looking at? Hundreds of thousands of dollars for the fill issue? And if we just reduced it by a foot, we would be saving so much of that money?
I don't have my head deep enough in it to know. Our civil engineer is really going to be. They just started on the analysis at this level on Monday. We we brought up the issue last week. We talked through a whole bunch of options. Presented the options to Gina and Joyce on Tuesday. So we know we've got a. Everything's happening on the east. That's our, that's the point that we need more info from the civil engineer on. Again, great, good questions. Reducing that footprint. I've never seen picking an arbitrary number to to reduce costs work. It's more of a. If there's an entire room or a function or a change in material, a a much. Larger piece. Just reducing square footages, it helps, but it never has the impact that you would want it to have. One of one of the other questions that I had, and this is partially for the folks at LJ Hart. Gina has had some questions on funding timelines and I heard you mention April as a potential date. We have in our schedule. Our first estimate, and I apologize, we were supposed to have that first estimate the first week of January. You can kind of tell with what we've been dealing with, we wanted to wait and work through it. We'll have that next cost estimate in, I believe, late February, February? No. Mid-March, is that right?
Yeah, you'll have the information to me late February.
So that's that's our next level of detail and one of the first estimates where we've got enough detail that we can. Estimate more than A times B equals C. The real. The really, really detailed estimate would come out in mid-April. And Clint, what's your comfort level on treating that as a? Budgeting number for bidding? With that being that far away, April to June.
So I think this next month, we're going to see the markets start to even out. So I I'd feel pretty confident. Again, we always, we always cost estimate a little bit higher. So I I would feel comfortable saying that we're going to be, you know, within the same parameters of the documents, you know, within. Within ten, within five, within fifteen, depending on which state we grab that in.
So Gina, does that answer the the timeline question?
Yes.
I'm gonna throw something out there. And maybe I should leave this between me and Alex, but I'm gonna throw it out there. If we do have to. Do some kind of a a dropped floor, a lowered floor in there. One thing that we can look at doing is access floor. I'm not the biggest fan because I've seen most of the time, we put it in, we have a nice, you know. Sixty, seventy-five thousand dollar cost upfront, thinking for future access and then it never gets used. But with a library. Technology's changing all the time. If you in that space, it does allow you guys some some room to work, some room to maneuver. So I'm just going to throw that out there, Alex. And again, maybe I shouldn't have in this meeting. But that is a potential item to look at. To keep everything on a level playing field, a level work surface, if you will. So just like I said. Probably should have talked with you about that, Alex, but I was thinking about that the other day.
It's all right. I've been doing the same since yesterday and Tuesday too.
Floor access.
What it does. You're talking about to put the cabling and wiring and stuff in the floor.
Right.
What what Clint's describing, we keep the two feet drop on the concrete. And then we raise up the floor inside the library with another secondary floor. That would reduce that ramp, the floor to floor heights. I'm not really a big fan of them either. But it it does accomplish something. It does help. It it provides an actual tangible benefit. Whereas most people just want it to run cables.
But what is that going to do with the weight of the books? It's that's not going to have the same capacity as a concrete floor, which is the reason we want. A concrete floor.
It actually is more. It'll actually hold more than the concrete will.
They they put them under computer IT servers all the time. They're, they can be incredibly durable and strong. We don't like them because it's a big echoey space. You 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 get the sound. It's just another thing to maintenance. It, there there's a whole bunch of reasons why mate, why that floor is. I don't know. There's a bunch of pros and cons to it. What what I think we wanted to loop back around to and that's, I was hoping the folks at LJ Hart were here for it was the discussion of the total project budget. And how. We, when we started in two thousand twenty, we were eight, nine million construction, which meant we were probably somewhere. Ten, no, sorry, I'm sorry, that's incorrect. There were six or seven construction, which we're going to, which was going to put us at eight million total, somewhere around there. Now we were down at four million construction and we're starting to climb back up to six. What is the board's comfort level with? That kind of total project budget? And is it possible for the board to set a budget for Ari Smith and Paragon to work under? Right now, we don't have one. And we're just using that four million as a stand-in until the Barry Lawrence can tell us what that number is.
Just from a financing perspective, I think we can absolutely cannot go over six million. As our total number. And I'd be a whole lot more comfortable if we had it below that, but. To commit four cents of our tax levy is is kind of high, even though it probably won't be four cents, but. Since everybody's being conservative.
And that was something we talked about with Gina on Tuesday. We would much rather. Set the budget at six and work very, very hard to undershoot that number. And set the budget at five point something and overshoot it.
I I told, when he asked me this on Tuesday. I said that I, you know, we can start cutting a bunch of things. But I don't think we're going to be able to cut enough to make a significant difference without really starting to. For it to be problematic with not having the things that we wanted to have. Does that make sense?
Well, sort of, but.
What I mean is, you know, you can cut a lamp and you can cut a, you know.
But I mean, the biggest savings would be cutting the size of the building.
I mean, obviously. So it depends on whether you, you know, you you want the building you want or you want the building you're willing to settle for.
Yes, that is an excellent way of saying it.
That that's that's your biggest, I mean, that's the only big savings in the whole thing is the size of the building. And then the size of the building also dictates where on the land you put it, which takes care of part of the problem with the draw.
And that kind of goes to Katie's question. We're tight north, south and west. So if we cut, the only thing that happens is the east shrinks, which is great because that's down slope. So it has an impact on that directly, but.
It's cutting the children's department, basically.
Yeah, we move the children's department, you cut out the kitchen.
Yeah, we could. I hate to do that, though.
I'd rather have kids than food.
But how much would it save us in the long run?
I don't know. I mean, we all, you, you know, you'd have to go back and look at this, where are you going to square off the building? And that's chunk of the buildings, what you're gonna, I don't know how many square feet we're losing. We're losing quite a bit. But that's the only way I can see that we save anything. But there again, you know. You want the building you want or you want the building you think you can pay for?
I just, you know, we've so often sacrificed things. And then wished that we hadn't done it. And so I think that's a good point. Do we want to do it? It's pay me now or pay me later. Joyce always says that, and it's so true. So I don't want any regrets on this building. And we just have to get with Julie and Katie and fundraise the heck out of the community.
What was the kitchen that it was a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars?
Well, that's, that's, and I, so the idea with the kitchen, if you remember, was for us to, because of the type of community that we're in with all the farming and what do you call it, ranching, I guess. That we would have an area where we could do food demonstrations in this area, so having a setup that we would be able to do that now. You know, we can always not do the kitchen, but again, it's, what, how did you put it?
Well, it's either getting what you want or getting what you can settle for. It's one of those two things.
One of the things I'll throw out with the kitchen equipment, and we've done this a lot for school districts, is design the kitchen for the exact equipment you want. And then just don't buy and install the equipment. So you have all the infrastructure there that you can always come back and install. You just don't have to put the upfront cost into the equipment. The one downside to that is if kitchen equipment costs go up, the model changes, and now the utilities have to change. So there's a little bit of risk, but it's a lot less money than a hundred and forty-five thousand.
But a hundred and forty-five thousand off of six million is a drop in the bucket.
That, exactly.
Yeah, that doesn't help us a great deal, you know, and like I say, I mean, it still comes down to the same thing. You know, it's either the building you want or the building you can pay for. I mean, I don't see, I don't see any great big savings anyway, except to reduce the size of the building.
Yeah.
And I hate to do, I mean, I really hate to do that, but that's what it's going to come down to.
The other part of it with this kitchen that I had not heard until, I think it was last week. Greg has some potential commercial food companies, donors in the community that are very interested in this Inspiration Kitchen, especially as a naming rights opportunity. So it, it, it went from, this is a very interesting programmatic element for the branch to this is potentially a way to gather donations. And that, that changed the perspective for me from earlier.
But that still comes down to unless you have a signed dedicated donation from somebody, a commit, something that they're actually obligated to fill, it's still just talk.
Right.
It's just blue air. And that's been our problem in years past. Oh, we had people that talked a lot about in-kind donations, but it never came through. And so if they're not committed to it, if they don't have a signed document that they're committed to, we're still paying the cost, the total cost of the building. Hoping that someone's going to come through with something else. But that's, that's kind of risky, but I don't know.
We need to, we need to go on faith. Seven years ago, we could have built this for two million. And now we're up to five.
And if we keep putting it off, it's going to keep doubling.
It is, it is, it is. And I, and look at the regret you guys have in so many other library buildings because you've cut corners.
But we bite the bullet and move forward.
We cut corners because we didn't have the money.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it was, I mean, you know, you, you didn't do it just because you want, you didn't want the building, but you only could pay for what you had the money to pay for. And, and this is the first tax levy we've had in, what, twenty-six years? So, you know. It all came down to that. We couldn't obligate ourselves with, at the time, ten buildings all going towards one building.
Well, I really hate, I hate to see us change anything. But if they reduce the end with the kids wing, could it be done in a way that it could be added on to eventually? I hate to see that happen. I like it just the way it is. One other thing real quick, I taught at Cassville when the intermediate building was built and we were all excited and we moved in and the fifth grade was in the basement and we were flooded out two weeks later. And they fixed it amidst all excitement and two years later, fifth grade was flooded out again. And then after I retired, fifth grade was flooded out again. And it's a nightmare. It's a nightmare to have any kind of water problem. So I hope we can do something that.
Now, we just, we just can't do that. I mean, that's one of our biggest problems always has been with Aurora. The way that building was built and the, the high water table over there, that bottom part of that, the part that's underground in Aurora has flooded since day one. And we have spent so much money on going back and fixing things that were damaged. That, yeah, so I, I don't think that's an option. I, I don't think that's an option at all.
So what I would ask the board for is, I don't know if it takes a motion or not, to give direction to RE Smith and Paragon on what the total project cost budget needs to be. And then Clint and I can sit down and start crunching numbers and figure out how we need to get to that number. The other thing, we targeted four million and we hit four point seven. There, there were things that happened, the economy and the site that changed that. I, I think of it like a giant pinwheel. We try and get closer and closer and more detailed and more detailed as we get closer. So those swings will get lesser and lesser. The only other the only other risk or black hole of information that I can think of is the geotechnical drilling results. Those will come at the end of February and that will tell us what the subgrade conditions are. So what, what's under the surface? That will tell us what kind of soil, if we need to do anything stabilization, especially now that we're talking about building up as opposed to down into. That's my only real cost, well, other than the economy, taking another left turn.
And that, so you're talking the core samples that are going to be done in February?
Yes, yeah, they, they finished those, they took those ten days ago. They won't have the results until February.
Yeah. Yeah, but February, when we get those.
Clint, is there any other context or questions you would want to ask or put forward?
No, I think I'm comfortable with not even worrying, I, I hate to say this, but I'm not worried about how those boards, the borings come back, the logs come back. Because when we did our adjustments, I adjusted that that's junk, I'm taking it out and I'm bringing in. So.
So we're covered then?
We're covered. That's not going to be an issue. Other than that, you know, the more we dial this down to, unless you guys come up with something that's just like, wow, we really want to spend eighty thousand dollars on this thing. A lot of the time, and Alex, you helped me too, I, I start to see that owner's contingency start to drop. So that's another hundred and, what do we have in there, thirty thousand bucks, something like that?
Yeah, I believe so.
That, you know, as we develop this thing and get closer to that, that's the CD documents. You know, that number starts dwindling unless there's just something you guys think, wow, you know, we're going to spend this much money on something or we need to spend this somewhere else. And that's why it's a contingency right now, because we're going to use it if we need it. But like I say, as we get closer to bidding, I always see that number falling. So that's something to keep in mind there, too. I, I don't think reducing the children's library area is going to save you that much because it is such an open expanse. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else.
So the, the biggest dollar figure areas, bathrooms, kitchen, computers. I can't think of any, like, the, the, the actual square footage means a higher dollar figure if you remove it. We've tried to design the space so that it's wide open, but that means there's a lot less stuff in it, which means when you reduce, you get a lot less money back. Is that accurate?
But even if we reduce the size of the building, it's not a significant savings.
It, it doesn't, so that A times B equals C, we just take the square footage, we multiply it by, I think. So that number right there, that two forty-one, we would have taken the nineteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-five. I think we multiply it, hell, here, I can just do it. We thought the building was going to cost a hundred and ninety-four dollars a square foot. When we had a building program of twenty thousand, six hundred square feet. We had a range, we thought four million, the high end was going to be that. We're now at two forty a square foot because it's a lesser square footage and a higher cost. So that, that's why that calculation is just kind of a plug number. It, it helps in budgeting way up front, but it's not terribly accurate as you get more and more detailed.
Would it be beneficial just to see what it would be like to take the kitchen out? And, you know, make that maybe the children's area? Or is this something where the kitchen could actually be a moneymaker for the library? I'm assuming we will charge people to use the kitchen. So we maybe not, don't even want to go that route, as long as we think we can rent the kitchen out, it will actually be making us money in the long run.
Couple things come to mind. If we're removing the kitchen, I would go the route of just not doing the equipment. That's a fixed number that's very easy to track. Removing the kitchen, we have to reconfigure the floor plan pretty heavily because we've built essentially west to east and all of these Lego blocks are then built off of one another to the east. That's why we left the east open. Moving the children's area over there, that's something that we had in an older option. We tried really hard to get the children's area away from nose-in parking spaces to the building. And that's one of the reasons it's on that end. The other is the patio and the direct access. So moving the children's area to the west side means that patio has to go with. And now we're on a, basically a redesign.
Which I think we. I think we need to just bite the bullet and go with it as it is. And and commit to the six million or less. Anything that we can save, maybe by the time we bid, things will pick up where we've got better pricing again.
And that is something that we talked about on Tuesday. We would really, really hope that that occurs in June, July. We cannot depend on it. We don't want to. It would be really, really nice if it just cost less at bid time.
Yeah. Janine, what do you think?
Well, the basement thing that you talked about, I'm, I'm, I'm always against the basement thing because I've seen, like he said, Missouri basements just leak. I wouldn't go basement route at all, but I think probably, I hate to see any of it go, the children's section in particular, because you know, that's a big area. And the kitchen, I can see if you're going to, you know, use that and rent it out as well. So I'm kind of like you.
Yeah, I would, I would think by the time we build this, I'm sorry, Janine, I didn't mean to talk.
That's okay, go ahead.
By the time we build this building, I think we're going to have to revisit our meeting room policy because this will be a much fancier space. And I think we'll have to come up with something for the space for rental opportunities.
That's what I was kind of thinking. The way things are now, even the kitchen, I mean, you know, and I've seen places like the senior center here, people that rent things out and then leave it in a mess and then, you know, we would, who would go in and take care of all that kind of thing. So you're going to have to have different rules if that's what your plan is. I would imagine.
Wendy, what do you think? Wendy?
Hi, I, I just, I like it just the way we had it. I would really love to just try to do it the way we're doing, we had it planned here.
Jan?
I agree. I think we need to go for it. We've been back and forth on this.
Julie?
I, I think we need to step out on faith and, and stay with what we have.
I agree. So do we need a motion?
A lot of the whole thing depends on how much money we can raise. If we could raise a great deal of donations, then we're solid.
Well, don't we, how much do we have now in donations?
Right now.
Six hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, in donations, we've got about two hundred and fifty thousand plus in the account, but, and then we have up to six hundred and a little over six hundred thousand. If you add the money that we set aside from operating funds, the surplus. And I have an idea, Gina may stab me in the eye, but, and it's okay. You know, we took and put money into the Shell Nob account, and if we are not going to build the Shell Nob building, I think that system money needs to come out of there and be put into this. And that would give us about seven, between seven hundred and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. No, I'm not going to stab you in the eye. I knew that was coming.
And but I do, we do need board approval to do that, so.
Yes.
And we probably, let's put it, delay that for a while.
Yeah. Okay, can we take down the the lovely picture so I can see everybody, please?
All right, yes, absolutely.
Okay, Katie, I know how you feel, so I didn't ask you again.
Well, just, I, I just want to say, Monette has been waiting a long time for this library. My daughter, who is eighteen, raised money eighteen years ago a, as a penny drive. So the people of Monette need to have a new library. And however that needs to get done, we need to do it, and it needs to be something that they're proud of.
And it needs to be spectacular. It really does. Because.
Because this is our main community. It, this needs to be the, what is it Greg always calls it, the?
Flagship?
The flagship branch, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so we need a motion to set a budget?
I make a motion?
And I'll second it.
What's the motion for?
Okay, what is the budget?
To set the budget?
As presented, I suppose.
As presented, yeah.
I, I would, I would recommend that come from Barry Lawrence. We, we don't, legally, we can't set the budget.
Okay, so five point eight million?
No. I think you need to say more than six.
No more than six? Okay, so you move, who moved? Katie moved, didn't you? Didn't you first?
Julie moved and I seconded.
Okay, all in favor? Motion carried.
There you go, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clint, folks, LJ Hart, thank you for sticking around. We appreciate it.
Yep, thank you. Thank you for letting me be here.
Thank you for showing your face.
You're welcome. It takes a lot sometimes.
You'll see him a lot, I'm sure.
Yes, I'm sure.
Get used to it. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
See you later. Have a good day.
You, too.
Thank you.
Give me a second. Let me mentally reset for the master plan.
Did you need something else, Brittany?
No, Courtney.
Courtney?
No, I assume you're moving into the rest of your meeting?
Yes.
Okay, and I will go ahead and sign off. Thank you very much for your time and have a good meeting.
All right, you, too. Thank you, Courtney. Bye, Todd.
Bye, Todd.
Thank you. All right, so what I have is the draft master plan to present to you. I'll go through it relatively quickly, try and save you guys some time.
That'd be great.
Yeah. I'll, I'll hit the highlights. I've sent the PDF to Gina this morning. What I will say and apologize for is that we do not have the cost estimating in that master plan. What I will say and apologize for is that we do not have the cost estimating in that master plan. We've completed the design and the drawings, we've completed some of the square footage analysis. But we haven't made it to the building systems and building cost estimates. Let me put this up on the screen. Oh, before I do that. That master plan is intentionally set up to be a binder. That binder can then have dividers for each of the branches and locations. So that this living document can stay on with Gina and Joyce and get added to over time. It is not intended or meant to be, Paragon dictates the master plan and that's it for the rest of forever. It's more of a, here is all of the information that we can possibly give you to set you up for success. And then you have resources when you talk about this year, five, ten from now. That facility master plan, uh, there's a preamble, it's just kind of discussing, uh, the history of, uh, the project. How we got here, who was involved, the board members, please correct me Gina on, uh, board member, uh, uh, names. I may have an older version or may not, I think.
I didn't have those pages, Alex.
Say that again?
We don't have those pages.
Uh, the.
I only, ours, the one I sent them is the one that you gave me, the attachment that starts with Casville. From when we had our meeting the other day.
Oh, sorry, it didn't send until eight fifty-five this morning. I sent an email, uh, very, very early and apparently it was a large file and didn't go through. Um, let me put that up. So, whoa, that's not what I wanted. Cover page, that's just the binder, table of contents, so preamble, executive summary, a section for each one of the facilities. And then those appendix at the end for, uh, building systems and building cost. The preamble, just the paragraph kind of on, generally on the process. Project team, I've listed Paragon, Gina and Joyce, who all from each team, um, was participating. Board of trustees members, I, I got this, I believe, from the year-end report twenty twenty, I think it's accurate.
I think the only one is Janine has an E instead of an I, right, Janine?
Yes.
J A N E N E.
Uh huh, right.
Oh, geez.
No biggie, but that's right.
I will not bore you with the executive summary, that's probably where most of them need, um, that the board would be interested. Um, I would recommend reading that whenever we can get it to you. It's just a paragraph blurb on, um, what we looked at, what we concluded, um, those kinds of things.
And I'll make sure everybody gets a copy after the meeting and Alex makes whatever corrections.
Oh, yeah, there, there's a lot of corrections and additions to be made. This is the first draft where we've actually put it all together into a binder or a book. I apologize, I finished it at eleven thirty last night, so please forgive any spelling errors. The.
Librarians like to mark things up.
I'm all for it, we, uh, we call it redlining in our office, we understand it. Um, just a basic analysis on each one of the branches includes a picture of the facility and then a picture of the surrounding site.
Nice to have.
Some of that analysis as far as square footage. The folks that are in real estate may know this, um, gross is everything on the building that touches the ground. Net is all of the rooms inside your building that don't count circulation. And then that net to gross is an analysis of how efficient that building footprint is in giving you usable space. Casville got the existing conditions, and then I wanted to show you the new and what Gina and I had amended. We moved, uh, eliminated the computers area down here and moved it, uh, to behind a circulation desk. Moved the teens area to this corner. Um, extended the workroom out into the children's area to capture that little space. Um, the discussion with Greg, uh, Gina, let me know if I'm spoiling anything, I shouldn't say this.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, Greg was gonna take photographs of the mural, digitize it and turn it into a piece of artwork that can hang on the wall. Uh, either in genealogy or out in the library as a way of addressing, um, that particular donor piece. The workroom, we had originally talked about putting a storage room in. Um, I intentionally did not put the storage room in that footprint because it seems like a bad presentation to the public. To say, we're gonna cover your mural with a storage room.
Even though that's what we'll probably do, for that, that was just my suggestion.
Right. Um, those are pretty much all of the changes to the Casville floor plan. Any comments on this particular branch?
And Alex, the computers that, um, that were in the children's area that got eliminated. Yeah, those can go in another location because there's plenty of floor space for it, right?
Yes, I also think your computer area has grown in footprint in Casville in this location. So you could move some of them, if not all of them there.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna keep going, Eagle Rock. Again, picture and then site plan, this facility, uh, we've really only put in a plug, dollar value, ten thousand dollars allowance. For them to self-perform finishes and some shelving and furniture changes, there's no real design to it. But it's still, um, analyzed. One of the things, uh, Gina Joyce, I'd like to work with you on is getting the, uh, linear feet of shelving for each of the branches. That's a metric that I think can really help, uh, not only analyze the new Monet library. But to be able to compare your branches on how much capacity for books you have. And this would be a, a great location to record that. We added in the existing Monet library as the renovation for the main office. We received the drawings for that, um, yesterday, will still be working on that, um, beyond this point. But we'll, uh, we'll have drawings on that as soon as we can create them.
Alex, we have drawings for the, um, garage, but I did not include them because I wasn't sure if you needed them or not.
If you wouldn't mind sending them, I don't mind drawing it up, it's, uh, it will help with potentially plugging that into the maintenance, uh, section. As the, the in-between on a facility, as well as just knowing storage capacity on main office.
Okay.
Um, that maintenance facility, we removed the, the truck bay and reduced it, uh, pre-engineered metal building, same thing as we've shown in the past. No change to Marionville. Uh, Miller, the only thing that changed is I got a.
Maybe a change.
A draft of that sign on the front, um, trying to incorporate Barry Lawrence's new logo. Um, and then Gina Joyce, just replacing the panel sign that's there. It seems like that's an old branding sign. And we can replace it with a new one, we've at least, um, updated it without really needing any organism, or, uh, input from the city. Yeah, we'd have to check it with them, but we already know what we have, they, they can grandfather it in.
I wonder if they even have any.
Uh, we've got a plug section for the new Monet library, I'll add more detail as we get further into that project. Mount Vernon, this is the biggest change, um, from what we spoke about last. Beginning of this month, I probably did seven, eight, nine iterations of a floor plan design. All of them kind of pushed back. The building footprint and then the site footprint. To get all of the programmatic elements into the library that you guys want, we exceed the site. We can't, we either can't add parking and I don't even know if that's possible, if the city would allow it. But then also, we can't really fit all of those elements in. What we talked about, Gina and I talked about last week was it may make more sense to build a new Mount Vernon library branch. And there were a couple of avenues that we were looking at.
Not this week.
What's that?
Not this week.
No, no. Um, well, it, and, and it, I have to say, it, I'm sure it, it's not, um, comforting knowing that one of the facilities that has almost no building system issues is one of the buildings that is a prime candidate to be replaced that. That's not an E, I, I did not take that lightly, but I, I couldn't, I just couldn't get ten pounds in the five-pound bag. Um, one, I'm glad somebody's laughing, uh, I, I, uh, uh, talked with Gina about the couple of options that we could take. One of them would be to purchase that residential property right next to the site. And then build the new library branch from that west end. So that the Mount Vernon library existing would not have to go out of operation during construction. So you build a new library and then demolish the old one, so you never go out of operation. All that changeover occurs on the same site. I'm not entirely sure that that's feasible because you may have the same issue in terms of site footprint. When we got to that point in the discussion, Gina and I said, we really need to talk to the board. Because the next option is looking at a new location, building a branch somewhere else. And that's a, a scope change that's well beyond, um, what we've talked about with you. What we created with that prototype library floor plan, uh, later on in this master plan would be an amazing template to then build off of for a new Mount Vernon branch. Gina, is there anything else you would want to talk about with Mount Vernon?
Uh, no, can you explain, because Joyce was asking me questions yesterday. When I was trying to explain why the site, the current site would not work. Um.
Joyce, when we add all of the program, program spaces to the building, it comes out, um, almost to that second row of parking. So you lose about a third of your existing parking. And then you would only get twelve more parking spaces. Whoops. Twelve more parking spaces on that, um, same site, so the parking spaces didn't go. And then the footprint of the kids and the teens area were fighting back and forth. So it was almost like the constraints of the mechanical room and restrooms inside the building were pushing us in particular ways. Let me see if I can mark this.
So Alex, what if we purchased the property to the, whatever direction that is? That whole town confuses me, to the west?
Yes.
Um, and used it for parking?
You're talking, hold on, let me.
Where the house is.
Wrong program. You're talking about buying this property and turning it into parking?
Yeah.
That, that starts to make it feasible.
And then still using the existing building, and I realize we would have to, um, we would have to close the branch for a while. But I'm sure we could work.
Same section of it.
Yeah, we, I'm sure we could work it out where we could have a small branch somewhere, but, um, and of course, this is way down the road at this point.
Right, the, this floor plan, what, uh, Gina and I had come up with, we leave the meeting spaces, we move the workroom and the break room to that back corner. Every one of these other areas that we move there means that visual supervision just dissolved. So we're trying to move everything to the, what would be the south side of the building or, uh, west. We kept the restrooms, the meeting rooms. There was something nice about putting children's and teens behind the circulation desk and splitting adult stacks from those areas. Not a huge fan of the circulation desk having three hundred and sixty degree. Um, but I didn't, we, we couldn't find any, um, any other ways that worked with that. Um, moved the genealogy room, um, and then kind of use that to anchor the adult stacks.
And the, the problem that I told Alex with this plan is that the children's department needs a lot more space.
Right.
And so once you increase the children's space, then you have to increase the size of the building. Because if we don't gain enough space, then the whole project is moot, it's a moot point. And he's trying to leave a lot of the systems in place, so where we already have restrooms, they would stay. Where we already have a meeting room, it would stay, the meeting room would just grow, so.
From, from the last iteration, we went from light renovation to renovating every square feet of the building. And that's the biggest jump. And at that point, when we were renovating every square foot, it was gonna be out of operation. We couldn't get all of the, uh, program into the building. It just felt wrong to keep spending time and working on it until we checked with you, um, on which direction to go.
Pitched rough at that point?
When we just got through paying.
Well, and the other thing Gina and I talked about is if you have another, if you pick a different site for the library and build new. You can sell the existing property and have some capital to put towards other things. If, if this site just keeps fighting you and, and doesn't make any sense on adding to a new facility will come out ahead. At this point, we've already added sixty-seven, we've, we've, we've more than doubled the building square footage. And we're not even meeting the program needs. So we're at one and a half, two times the existing facility size. And at that point, in addition, doesn't make as much financial sense.
I told Alex that this building, that Mount Vernon needs to be every bit as big as Casville in all honesty. Because they, they're, they're busier, you know, their programs and everything are really, you know, big.
So right now, Mount Vernon is sixty-one hundred square feet and Casville.
Is nine, well, it's nine, currently nine thousand, I think.
Yeah, nine thousand seven hundred, and that's gross, Gina, so, uh, and that was part of what I wanted to check with you, gross square feet versus net square feet.
And how much are we proposing to add on to it?
Uh, eighteen hundred square feet?
Yeah.
So it goes to eleven thousand five hundred.
To me, Ca, I, I think Castle and, and Mount Vernon need to be equal in size, the county seats.
So at, at that point, we are going double the existing of Mount Vernon. If not more, because when you're dealing with the existing utilities and systems and trying to keep them for cost, obviously, it's it pushes us into very specific floor plan setups that we wouldn't pick if we were building new.
We don't have to make a decision today, though, do we?
No.
Um, if it's a new branch, no. If we're, if Paragon needs to provide a design of this facility with an addition. The mandate from Brad essentially is that I was supposed to be done with this in December and I'm already pushing it into February.
Okay.
What if we use what Alex already has? And that would be the basis of us doing something maybe in the future. But just know that this is probably going to be a building project at some point, which we'll have to revisit. And basically go back to the drawing board.
I mean, because this, none of this is set in stone, it's just for, it's future dreaming is basically what it is.
Right.
It's trying to help us, it's a planning, planning to plan document. So I'm fine with leaving what Alex has done. And you'll see with the prototype building that, you know, it, it could be done.
Gina, what I'll do, I'll get rid of this new floor plan and I'll turn it into a program document of what you want to see.
Okay.
So rather than use a floor plan, we'll use like a spreadsheet.
Okay.
Uh, nothing. Uh, nothing new on Marionville. Sorry, Pierce City. Wow, I have looked at these way too long.
Remember with Pierce City, it was just the entryway that was going to change.
Yeah, basically just the reconfiguration inside the building.
Right.
Right. Little, little bit of changed interior finishes, different zones and different areas, but very limited renovation.
Right.
Um, this is the prototype library floor plan. Uh, the program for that was a 50 person meeting room, furniture storage for that meeting room. Bathrooms for the facility, which we went a little bit over code because code only requires two. And that just seemed too little for feasible daily use. Mechanical and storage, and we've intentionally tried to keep, put in and keep storage in this plan that it doesn't get lost when something happens in the future. Small meeting room, two small study rooms, very similar to what's going in at Cassville or what was on that master plan. Break room, workroom, supervisor's office and circulation desk. We've also included an outdoor patio and a stacks area. And that stacks area would break up into teens, children's and adults in some fashion. Gina and I were trying to nail down all of the other components. And then we'll come back and split that up into the different zones. The things that you wouldn't see just looking at the floor plan, we've kind of anchored it off this back corner intentionally so that the building can grow to the right side of the page or down on the page. So that any program elements that you add to this, so for example, Mount, it's perfect example, Mount Vernon. You take this, you add genealogy, you add multiple meeting rooms or those kinds of things. The building can actually grow in those two directions without redesigning and redoing the whole thing. Being a prototype, there's nothing that says that this has to be followed. It's more of a, an attempt to reduce planning if you ever had to do a new branch.
Yeah.
Gina, anything that we talked about that I missed?
You've added everything I asked you to, the, um.
Wonderful.
The study rooms, the purple, if you see this small purple meeting room, that's actually a public room where a, a study group could meet of what, six to eight people? Isn't that what we said?
Yes.
So. And I actually asked him to increase the bathrooms so that we could have two halls in each bathroom. Cause it seemed like not enough restrooms for that size building, so.
And that, that took us to 10,400 square feet. And that, that starts to show and allow you to compare some of the other branches to what you would do new and what elements those other branches don't necessarily have. Anything else worth talking about on that one?
No.
Okay. Uh, Shell Knob, Gina, we'll do the, the front facade. That part of it would be, um, it's a detailed cost estimate and allowance essentially. Sorry, I was talking, Gina McElrough. The idea would be that it's a cost estimate to show that front. And that would include replacing that sign very similar to Miller, to the new branding, the new colors, all those things.
Okay.
Uh, and then I'll have, I'll basically be pulling lots of information from those Excel spreadsheets on the building systems and all those things for cost estimates and putting that in the back of this binder. Are there any questions on any of these branches? Anything you'd like to see changed or different in the final version?
I think it looks good to me.
I'm going to have to go outside now. So I'm going to mute myself and turn off my screen until I get back out in car. They're showing my house.
Okay, well, uh, I'll take, I'll take no comments as a good sign. There's a lot more work that I want to put into this, a lot more data so that the final document is a lot more useful. As long as we've kind of got the guide rails, we can fill in between for that final.
And I still need to go.
Anything else? All right. Thank you so much for your time. I know that that was a long, long two hours of building projects, so thank you.
And we're going to run quickly through the rest of the meeting, so. Thanks.
Have a good week, everybody.
Your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, while we're waiting for Gina to come back up, uh, I just wanted to briefly tell you that I, I, I told you this in email, but I wanted to go on record in saying it, that I did talk with Commerce Bank. They have asked to not, I mean, they're not going to submit any information because they could not get a long enough time period to stretch it out to make the payments feasible. And so, but they are very interested in purchasing certificates of participation. Katie had also talked with First State Bank and I went in and talked with the bank president, whose name, it's Larry Henderson?
Randy.
Randy. Randy. I don't know why.
Was Larry Mini.
Yeah. Maybe there's, I'm trying to combine the two.
Yeah, this is Randy, yeah.
And at any rate, it was a very useful conversation. First State Bank is not set up to do public financing, but they are also very interested in purchasing certificates of participations. And he wanted to make sure that, uh, that we were going to do local find, you know, talk to local first. And I said, the board made that very clear that we want to keep this as local as possible. So he was very pleased with that. I did, uh, because of Neo Show Public Library, I had talked with Carrie Klein there and she had suggested I talk to Gilmore Bell. Um, and then when I talked to Gilmore Bell, he really said, they're really a legal firm that does bond legal work. Um, and he could do, they could do the paperwork for us if we needed. But it's really Stiefel that I needed to talk to, which is S.T.I.F.E.L. I thought it was stifled, but it's Stiefel. Um, so I've called and talked to Stiefel and I didn't get to talk to them until Friday this last week. That's just when we were able to catch up with each other. And, um, they're, they're going to put together a packet to present to you either at the February meeting. But I'm hoping maybe before the February meeting that we can just have a 30 minute special meeting and let them make a presentation. They also do public financing, but they're a much bigger company, um, I think than LJ Hart. So I don't know what that would mean, but, um, they're, they've done a lot of different financing. They did it for Neo Show and they also did all of Mid-Continent, which is the massive multi-million dollar project. So, um, I think, and they're, I think the largest fi, public finance company in the country. So they are not local, but neither is LJ Hart. But they, they do projects locally, but they are in the state. So I thought, well, at least we're keeping the money in the state. So, and it's staying local if people buy their certificates of participation. So I just wanted you to know that's kind of where we're at with that, so.
Okay. Sorry that took so long. I had to turn on a personal hotspot. Okay, minutes of the December meeting. So everyone read them? They need a motion to approve the minutes. Wendy?
I still move.
And Janine? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Minute, uh, passed. CMR committee may need minutes. Does everyone read those? Need a motion to approve both the November 30th and the December 15th meeting minutes.
I knew that we, um, accept them.
Okay, oh, thank you, Katie, who's the second? Julie? All in favor? Motion carried. Financial report.
We received our first payment, tax payment of $395,000. And you can, almost $396,000. And you can see that's quite a bit more than last year. Part of that, of course, is the new tax increase. But also, you know, we have a lot of new building construction, so that has helped us out as well. So for the month, our income was 405,776. Um, and you can see that's up a little bit from, from last year. Um, and then with our expenditures, we spent 172,000. Um, and I think part of that was money that we paid to the roof.
Yeah.
So, um, so it's kind of nice to see that our income was over, you know, $20,000 this time. And, uh, and as I was saying before, uh, well, we do have $436,000 in checking. So that was a big relief that we made it through December without being down to mere pennies. Um, and our reserve fund right now for Monette is 612,865. And Shell Knob is 182,565. And we'll find out, uh, I just can't remember if it's 100 or 150,000 of that. Shell Knob is system money, but we'll get to that number and we can decide how much of any of that we want to pull and put into the Monette. Or we can leave it and if we need it, we can pull it. And if we don't, we'll leave it, you know, we can do that too. So that's just something to keep in mind.
Okay. Need a motion to approve the financial report?
I knew that we accept them.
That was Katie.
Katie and, and Jan? All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carried. Circulation stats.
For the month of December, we circulated 16,569. And considering that we were closed a good number of days, which by the way, the staff and I both thank you because it was nice to have that downtime. And we actually did end up with a couple of staff members that ended up with COVID. That, so we didn't have to close any of the branches because they were already closed. So that was a good decision. We were only open 15 days total. So I, I feel like that's pretty good amount of circulation for that timeframe. Um, our Missouri Libraries to Go was up to 2360. And then our Hoopwa is again, the big number, we're at 1982 circulation. I talked with the supervisors, uh, Friday. And based on our lack of use of Ancestry, we are probably going to drop it. That's about almost $4,000 a year. And even before, um, COVID, when you can, when you cost out what it's costing per cer, per search, it's too much money for us to spend on that. I would rather us take that $4,000 and put it into ebook circulation that we have so many more people using. I think Ancestry, part of the problem is we can't offer it outside of the library, so it limits the use. And so many people, they've made it so affordable and they push so hard for individuals to purchase it. We just aren't seeing the use that we did. And we still have Heritage Quest. It's not that there won't be a searchable database, it just won't be Ancestry. So, um, we're probably going to drop it. The same with Creative Bug. I didn't give you the numbers, but they're abysmal. It, it was a great idea to try that. But I think because Pinterest is so easy and it's free, that that's what people are using and, and they're not using Creative Bug. So we won't renew that. And I'll look at what we can expand for offerings for ebook circulation. So just a side note. Obviously, when we're open fewer days, we have a lot less use of the computers. So we only had a, a little over a thousand, but our wifi use was 454, which was pretty good. And then in December, we had 130 programs with attendance of 3784. Now, part of that is, excuse me, passive programming. But all in all, I think not bad for December when generally our circulation's down anyway. And then being closed for the number of days we were closed. I'm pretty, I'm pleased overall with our circulation numbers. On the branch activities, I just wanted to point out, you gave approval for the blanket drive for Aurora. They collected seven 33 gallon trash bags full of blankets.
Whoa.
So she said that they, they, she didn't, they didn't pull them out to count them individually. By the time they realized they hadn't done that, it was, it was too late and they didn't want to keep handling the, the blankets. And then in Marionville, they had a Christmas quilt silent auction. And they made $260 on one quilt and $75 on another. So I thought they did pretty well overall in their, um, in what they did in the branches and activities. So, and Monette right now is in the midst of their blanket drive. So the teens are, I think, are doing that.
Okay. Director's report.
All right, so yesterday, uh, we hired our last vacant position. That's all I'm going to say about, not going to make, I'm not going to stink myself. But that position had been held for quite some time. And so Cheryl asked, uh, back in December if they could go ahead and fill it. And so they interviewed and they offered the position to Judy Fletcher. Um, and she will start this Saturday. And that's a 24 hour position. Last month, I reported to you that Marlena Bond, who is Judge Sweeney's daughter, had donated $3,000, which she did last year as well. And I think last year Walmart matched it. She works for corporate Walmart, uh, air, down in Bentonville area. And, um, they, they matched it with 3750. But this year, we got a check for 6,000. So that, I thought that was really good and it's designated to go to the building fund. So that was $9,000 to the building fund. Yay.
Yay.
We'll just eat at that $6 million, so, um. There was a, quite a discussion about the COVID vaccines in my public library directors group. And so as a public library group, um, we decided to send letters to the Missouri Department of Health and Human Service, or Senior Services and ask that they upgrade vaccines for library staff as essential workers. And so I sent a letter to them, but I also filled out a survey online requesting that we be upgraded to level, one be level three, which would put us right behind teachers and so forth, I think. So I'm hoping to see that and then trying to push maybe for us to have vaccinations as a library staff if we can get to that point. So, cause I think that vaccine's important. We're still going to have to wear masks for a while, but, um, that would help. Then technology wise, um, I just wanted to let you know that we, Leanne has just been great about applying for grant money. It's really been wonderful because it has saved us thousands and thousands of dollars and we're able to keep our equipment upgraded. So she had asked for a technology mini grant for 20 computers and monitors and two laptops. And so we got, um, those computers. and two laptops, and so we got um those computers and laptops in recently. And um, she's working on getting those all set up, and she'll get them distributed here pretty soon. Um, and that replaces just some of our aging computers for the public. So, we've applied for another technology ladder grant, and that will, um, if if we get it, will replace thirty, the other thirty public computers. And we'll also get nine new tablets for the PayPal processing. We kind of have a hodgepodge right now. We have some iPads that we had from some other things that, um, we purchased some Asus tablets. And it's, we've used them long enough now that they're starting to have some issues, and we thought it'd be nice to have them all the same rather than this hodgepodge of things, so. Um, I told her to put that in there, and just a reminder that um, all technology grants require a twenty-five percent match. So, twenty-five percent of fifty thousand dollars is so much better than fifty thousand dollars, so. Yeah, and that, they, it won't cost that much, but that's the number that popped in my head.
Okay, need a motion to approve the director's report? Wendy? Janine's second, all in favor? Motion carried. Calendar year-end budget review.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna make this quick. I just um, act from Ju- July through January, which was our June through December receipts. We have actually collected um six hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. Yeah, I'm sorry, that's wrong. I'm sorry, one million eighty-one thousand seven ninety-three sixty-six in current tax. Now, we have not gotten the December, which would be the January money, from Berry County yet. So, it it means if you compare to last year, we're behind about two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. But we will collect way more than that from Berry County, so we're gonna be significantly ahead, which we should be with our new tax in current dollars. So I'll be excited to report that to you next month. Um, as far as the rest of the delinquent, the surtax, the road road and utilities and so forth, we have collected two hundred and eighteen thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars so far, and that compares to two hundred and eight, two fifty-six last year. But again, we don't have all the money yet from Berry County. We haven't gotten that check yet. Hopefully, we'll get that in the next few days. I'm really pleased to report that we actually got uh money from the state. The governor did release funds. You know, this year I budgeted no money for state aid equalization or A and E because we just didn't know. And so we've received eighteen thousand five fifty-seven from state aid, just under twenty thousand dollars for equalization, and a little over four thousand for A and E funds. So that totals forty-two thousand three seventeen. So we're just a hair under where we were last year by about two thousand dollars. So I, I'm pretty happy with that overall. I mean, to get any state money this year, I think is, whatever we get, we get. I'm very happy with that for not having budgeted anything, thinking we're getting nothing. So, that's kind of where we're at. Um, our monthly spending is about the same as it always is, but the first six months, I think, now that we're kind of through the, whoo, uh, when, when are we gonna get our new tax money? Um, I think we're looking at a pretty bright future, so.
Okay. Personal po- personnel policy updates.
Okay, I want to look at the holidays and bereavement first. With the holidays, this was because you all had approved um, having the day after Thanksgiving in lieu of Veterans Day. So if you look at the holidays, you'll see that I've taken Veterans Day off of our uh list of paid holidays and added the day after Thanksgiving. And then I added a statement that says, library staff that are United States veterans will be allowed to take Veterans Day as an additional paid holiday. Only veterans are allowed this privilege. So that addresses the changes that we made. Uh, everything else remains the same. On the holidays. On the, sorry, I was like, why do I have, okay, let me put that one down. Bereavement, on bereavement. Sorry, I had two copies of everything because I was supposed to send one to Mr. Pider, but I had to send him um, emails and, or digital copies instead. On the paid bereavement, um, this would be a change, and this came out because we had a part-timer who asked for bereavement, and we only had it in the policy for um, full-time people to get bereavement pay. And, but now that we're providing sick leave and vacation leave, um, how do you tell somebody whose mother died that they can't be paid for bereavement just because they're part-time? So, I wrote it in here that uh paid bereavement leave is granted to employees. I took out the wording full-time, part-time, um, for a death in the immediate family, blah, blah, blah. And I put paid, or s- excuse me, part-time staff are only paid for the number of hours that they would typically be scheduled. So they wouldn't be paid for eight hours if they aren't typically scheduled for eight hours. So it's just a minor change, but um, I think it's important, especially in times of grief, to to be able to pay people and not make it to where they have, before it said that they had to make up the time. So. And so the, the, um, the vacation is actually a, a request from me that ties into the staff increases. And um, so you could say yes or no, it's really up to you. But um, I am not gonna ask for a pay increase this year. I'm actually asking not to have one. I got a significant one last year. And that's gonna do me for several years because it's gonna really price out my position in this market. And so what I would like to ask in lieu of having a pay increase is the opportunity to earn a little bit more vacation time. So, that would be, often library directors are able to negotiate things that other staff are not able to negotiate. And so my negotiation would be that, um, on the library director, that they're allowed four weeks of vacation time, eligible for one week after completing the first six months of employment, um, eligible for an additional three weeks. Did I not put in here what I wanted to say? Oh, I said additional vacation leave may be negotiated after ten years of employment. So it, it couldn't be somebody who's a newbie that comes in and says, well, I want six weeks of vacation. I don't want six weeks of vacation. Um, so. And I would just negotiate with you whatever you thought was fair. But I thought maybe a year, uh, I'm sorry, oh, day um, for the next five years so that I had the potential to earn five weeks of vacation with a cap at five weeks.
What do you have now, Gina?
Four weeks.
Okay.
The direct, the director doesn't earn any more vacation than anybody else. They just have the opportunity to come in and have it on the front end rather than having to wait for the, whatever the schedule is for full-time employees.
Seems reasonable to me.
Me too.
I think so too.
So is this gonna have to uh change the op- the policy, or is this um something, like if, if you do leave, um, it's gonna run up to the next person?
No, so that's why in the, that's why in the policy I said that it's an additional vacation leave may be negotiated after ten years of employment.
Okay.
So if somebody new came in, they, I mean, like, obviously, I guess they could negotiate with you, and you could tell them no. But um, but technically, they would not be able to negotiate it until they had been here a significant amount of time.
Okay.
I thought ten years was, I, I picked ten years because I felt like there should be. I, I'll be here ten years in eight, in August.
Oh, my goodness!
Yeah.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Or not.
Do we have to go into, do a closed session to do that, or, um?
No, I don't think so. I can leave, if you want to discuss it, I can leave the room. I don't, I don't mind doing it if you want me to leave.
That that's fair.
I do too.
I do too.
Need one to approve all of the changes in the first.
Don't we need to read them twice?
Yeah.
Okay, need a motion to approve the first reading. What did you want, Julie?
Um, are we talking about raises for everybody too, or are we just talking?
After this discussion, I'll come.
Okay.
This is just approve the policies, first reading of all three of the policies. Vacation, holidays, and bereavement.
Okay.
Julie, Julie moves, who seconds?
Katie.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carried. Second reading of the personnel policy changes. Need a motion to approve. Wendy? Second. Jan, all in favor?
Hi.
Motion carried. Okay, staff increases.
Okay, so this is the biggie. So, um, in June, I, when we presented the budget, I presented you with uh increases, not you know, not knowing what our tax increase was truly gonna be. Uh, it looks like it's gonna be pretty healthy. Of course, we are facing some big payments on a building coming up. Um, but I had calculated a four and a half percent increase for all staff, um, including library assistants. But as you know, minimum wage went up to ten thirty an hour for the state. There is the potential, if we don't increase the library assistants to ten thirty an hour, that we would lose staff because they're going to go find jobs at ten thirty an hour. So, I went ahead, at, if we went from nine forty-five to ten thirty, which is the minimum wage, that's a nine percent increase. So, I went ahead and gave you a column so you could see what a nine percent increase, w- with the exception of me, because I'm not asking for an increase, what it would mean for all the staff from the administrative assistant down. Now, you could decide to give the minimum wage increase to the um, library assistants, and then do a percentage increase with the other staff. If you, if that's how you want to do it, or you could decide to do the nine percent all the way across the board, or we could only do four and a half percent. At some point, though, we're going to really lag behind the rest of the state and the area. Um, now, uh, the first year, I think you went ahead and did the increase for the library assistants to keep up with minimum wage, and then I think, was it a five percent? That you gave to the rest of the staff. And, but at some point, remember that, um, range, the cushion we have between the pay grades will compress. And we'll end up hiring people at the same rate that other people have been making for a period of time. So just, if we, I'm just trying to give you uh information to make a good decision that at some point, we'll have to increase those pay ranges down the road if you choose not to do that now. So just so that you know what that means to the bottom dollar line, remember, we're only talking about six months of our budget year. So if you look at the, what we're paying right now at the current rate is, um, half of a million thirty is five hundred and fifteen thousand. That's what we paid from June through December. If we increased everybody four and a half percent, then we go from five fifteen, one sixty-eight to five thirty-six, one forty-one. If we go for the nine percent across the board, then we go from five fifteen, one sixty-eight to five fifty-seven, six thirty. Now, that puts us well over a million dollars, no matter what we do. So it, it, it will impact our budget. I mean, that's the truth. I mean, our biggest line item is always going to be staffing. There is no way around it. It just is what it is.
And they're wanting four percent of our seven percent for this building?
Well, they're, they're calculating at the worst-case scenario, it will take up to four of our seven cents.
That's.
Not to say, remember, he said we'll probably do better than that. They're giving us the worst-case scenario. We're gonna get a good rating, and we're gonna get good interest rates, so I don't think it's gonna be as bad, honestly.
That was your three cents of your increase, plus your mention of budget.
It sounds like we don't really have a choice with the hourly wage people if we want to keep them. Um, it's just whether we want to adjust everybody's to reflect that.
So, um, Sid says state minimum wage is nine forty-five, and federal is seven twenty-five.
Yes.
Right now.
Because remember, the state voted to increase minimum wage to twelve dollars an hour by twenty twenty-three.
Right.
So the federal minimum wage has not increased in ten years, twelve years?
I was thinking we voted to raise that already, did we not?
What the? I'm sorry, Julie, what did you say?
I, I was thinking, um, last year, we already voted to, um, do the increase.
We did, we, every year it's increased. So last year it went up nine point nine percent to nine forty-five. This year it goes from nine four, I mean, as of January one, the current state in, the rate is ten thirty an hour. It changed January one. And Walmart and McDonald's and Burger King and all of them are paying more than minimum wage. So if we stay too far under minimum, what the state minimum wage is, we will not be able to hire people. I think at the, at the very least, we have to increase to the state minimum wage, the library assistant positions. It's a matter of what do you want to do with everybody else? Because you can't give them a nine percent raise and give everybody else nothing.
Of course not.
So do you, and I just split the difference by saying, I mean, four and a half percent's a pretty big, healthy increase. But like I said, you know, we've, I've put some, um, cushion between each of the pay grades so that. You know, the library assistants aren't making more money than the, the people who have degrees, because that's not fair. Or who have more experience or who have worked here longer. There's nothing worse than having somebody come in and make more money than you make after you've been here fifteen years.
Right.
I've seen that happen. I've seen what it does to morale and. To the workforce when you have to hire peo- you have to replace those positions because they quit.
Right.
And we already have trouble finding qualified people. Lot of trouble. Because of our, because of what we pay. Our benefits are good, don't get me wrong. I, that saves us a lot. That's one reason I worked with you all to get those benefits up. But the benefits are only save us to a certain point.
Right.
Are we also seeing an increase in cost with the insurance? I saw something about that.
The insurance, um, I think I presented to you last month.
Last month, yeah.
Um, we, we only saw a very tiny increase with Anthem this time. It's just that that deductible for the staff went up pretty high.
So they're gonna have to come up with more money for the same amount of coverage.
Right.
Well, actually.
They're out of pocket.
They're out of po- they're, if they have medical expenses. For them, as far as what they pay per month. You did not increase their monthly premium match that they have to make. So. You know, like, straight out-of-pocket costs, as far as that goes, did not change. Our. Out-of-pocket, however, did. The library's paying a little bit more, but.
Of course, it only affects the full-timers that have the health insurance.
Yeah, then that's only for full-time health insurance.
Okay.
People, so that's not, the bulk, we only have nineteen, is it nineteen full-time staff? I think that's right. And only fourteen of them, I think, have health and coverage, because they have, those others have retired schoolteachers and they don't. They don't take the coverage. In Gina. Because her husband, some of them have husbands that have coverage and they don't have to have it.
Right.
Thank goodness.
And we're all.
No, it's, it's a. It's a tough one.
Yes.
You know, it only affects us, you know, for this budget year, six months, but of course. We're gonna have the same conversation next year and the year after, and if Biden decides to do fifteen dollars, we are screwed. We're, we'll never be caught up. That's, I, I don't, you know. Twelve dollars is hard, but at least we can do it incrementally, but. Any, anybody have a thought on, wanna toss something out there for us to discuss?
Well, I think we have to raise the minimum wage requirement. I mean, there, it doesn't look to me like we have a choice there. Now, whether we do four and a half percent or nine percent for the rest of the staff. Um, is that something we have to do all at once? Meaning, could we do, start with four and a half percent, and if we see things are going well, then give them another four and a half percent later? Would it be better to start with a smaller amount?
Except. We have, we have done that in the past. We've, you know, we've looked at it, because ours is a fiscal year. We've done a, you know, we've done an increase in January, and then we've turned around and, and, um, at the end of the fiscal year. We look at the budget at the end of the fiscal year, and we have done that in the past.
That's not a bad idea, Katie, actually. Because we, remember, we usually have surplus funds and we assign them. So we, that is a thought that we could go ahead and do the four and a half percent now with the thought if, of what we have coming up.
Yeah, I like that.
And that means it's only. We're only looking at about a sixteen thousand dollar increase. Versus almost a forty thousand dollar. It splits the difference for right, not quite splits, because the. Part-timers will get the full nine, but that's with the understanding that the part-timer, the. Library assistants would not get an increase in June.
Right.
The hourly wage people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
It, it's just that particular group is the one that would fall under that.
Yeah, that, we do have hourly wage people that fall in the professional category or.
I just feel like we have a lot of unknowns now until we s- get the bud- the building project started and. On the way to how we know how much it's gonna cost, to just say, okay, well, let's give everybody this amount.
Yeah.
Well, if you did it that way too, we should be well on our way to fundraising for this project by July. So by July, you, you know, you're gonna have a real good idea. Of whether we fund the entire project or we're only funding part of the project because of donations.
Yeah.
But a- and we have done it that way and, you know, and it, and it worked pretty well.
Well, and we'll also know more about our tax money. I feel like right now we don't even have both counties in, so it's hard to make a decision.
And we'll have, uh, we still have Berry County, and then we should get, we'll get, the bulk of the payments will come this month. But we will still get some in February and March.
Yeah, you're gonna get delinquent right up until November.
Yeah. But the current tax usually takes about four months to all come in.
Do we have to decide at this meeting? Can we table it?
No.
No, it has to be in January.
No.
As we're getting in your calendar. payroll next week, and so we have to, it has to be for January.
Well. Personally, I like Katie's idea. Um. And, uh. I don't think it would hurt our image to do that. I mean, it's still a, a healthy raise, no matter what.
Mm-hmm, it's something.
And it's a lot easier to budget that way too, because you actually know what your final figure is for the fiscal year, the end of June.
Right. So, do we have a motion, Katie?
I move that we raise this, uh, the hourly wage to the state minimum wage. And we give the other employees four and a half percent, um, increase on what they're making now.
Except Gina.
Except me.
Gina.
Okay, do I have a second?
Wait a minute, I need to, Katie, I need to amend that. Instead of hourly, it needs to be library assistants.
Okay, library assistants.
And then do we need to add in there that we will revisit that at the end of the year, or just know that we're?
I'll make a statement after the, at the end of the motion.
Okay.
Ten thirty.
Yeah, I have to, I have a funeral I have to go to, so.
Well, this is it, this is done after this.
So I need a second?
I'll second.
Wendy? All in favor? Motion, any, no, motion carried. So I need a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
Who's funeral are you going to?
Uh, Cheryl Williams, uh, from Berry County Abstract, her mother passed away.
I just was curious, we've had so many deaths here recently.
Yeah.
So all in favor of adjourning?
Bye.
Katie, get my number from Gina and we'll get started on, you know, talking about different things, okay?
Okay.
All right, okay, bye-bye.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for your time. Sorry, there was no pizza.
We have to save money.
Mr. Potter wasn't here anyway, so, you know.
Bless his heart. He's really had a rough time, I guess, I don't know.
Is he sick, I guess?
I hope you all do well and I'll see you, well, we may be talking earlier, we'll see what Stifel gets for us, so.
Okay.
All right.
Bye-bye.